Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 2022 City Council Election Forum, brought to you by the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce for here in Arlington, Texas. We are so excited that you're able to join us live, or those of you that are joining us after the fact via YouTube. First and foremost, we are incredibly thankful that you're watching this and participating today. It is imperative to be involved in local politics, so thank you so much for your participation and staying engaged with local politics here in the city of Arlington. Just to talk a little bit more and do a brief introduction, I am going to introduce the President and CEO of the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Michael Jacobson is being promoted now, so thank you so much, Michael, for joining us this morning.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here this morning.
Oh, Michael, we've got a microphone problem for you.
Do we? Okay, still do have a microphone?
I can't hear you, but I know Michael, so he would say something along the lines of how important it is that we focus on local politics, and I know he's trying to get his microphone up and running.
They say they can hear me?
We still can't hear you. Oh, you guys can hear him, I'm so sorry.
Okay, so that's fine, just watch my mouth briton, and when I stop, you can take over. So, I really do appreciate everybody being here this morning. I want to thank and give special thanks to all the candidates. I appreciate so much people who are willing to who are willing to run for office. Being a city council member is a challenging role, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of commitment. You sacrifice a lot in the process by giving up personal time and and time away from your family, or whatever the case is. So I want you to know how much I appreciate your willingness to run. Who, our city council is critically important to the future of our city. They're helping lead decisions that matter not only today, but will matter for years to come. So please do, I ask the people who are calling in, listen well to our candidates, and we appreciate you very much for being here, thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael, and everyone, I did troubleshoot my speakers, so I am good, and I apologize. So with that said, thank you again for joining us, and thank you to Michael for for being here this morning as well. I'm going to quickly recap the rules of this event. It's a very simple forum, not a debate. So we are inviting each of our city council candidates up. I will promote them from an attendee to a panelist. We will give them two minutes to introduce themselves, and then they will all answer five questions that they have been sent weeks ahead of time. Each of them will answer the five questions in a different order, so that way that it is not just a repetitive forum, but also you cannot skip a question. So if there's a specific question they wanted, they have to answer every question to get there. And with that said, we are going to go ahead and begin. So we are starting with the first district, there are two districts this this election that we are voting on, and we are starting with District Six with Albert Para. Albert, I have two logins for you right now, so I'm going to promote one, and if it's the wrong one, we will we will go to the other one, but I have your name on here twice. Now I have it once, okay, so now I've got the right one.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can, but you are going sideways, sir.
Oh, here, let me, let me change it up. Let me just move that, is that better?
That is delightful, so thank you so much for joining us today. So with that said, I'm going to set a timer for two minutes, and you can get started with your introduction.
Okay, well, thank you guys for having me on today. So first and foremost, my name is Albert Para, I am currently running for Arlington City Council Six. So a little bit about myself, I was born in El Paso, but then my parents moved here whenever I was five, and so I grew up in South Arlington. I was zoned for Kennedale School District, so I did have a little bit of a different experience there, but still grew up in South Arlington nonetheless. While at Kennedale, I was kind of like that All-American kid kind of thing, captain of the football team, president of National Honor Society, graduated the top of my class, but most importantly, I met my future wife, Catherine Para. After high school, went to Texas A&amp;M, graduated the Bachelor's in Genetics, and then went to medical school and residency at the University of Texas Health Science Center in San Antonio. There I had various other accolades, Vice President of our class, and worked on Latinos in clinical trials where I was published in prestigious journals. When we got the opportunity to come back to Arlington, it was when I was awarded a position at UT Southwestern for Hematology Oncology Fellowship, and it was a no-brainer to come back to Arlington. This is home, this is where I wanted to start my practice, is where I wanted to raise our kids. After finishing residency, I started my practice at the Center for Cancer Blood Disorders, where I currently have a split practice both in Arlington and Fort Worth as being the only Latino Spanish-speaking oncologist in Tarrant County that I'm aware of. My kids go to Butler School District, we have three of them, twin girls in fifth grade, little one in kindergarten. I've held various different types of activities throughout my professional career, but at the end of the day, people want to know, why am I running, what am I doing this for? So, and my parents always taught me that you have to take care of yourself, you have to take care of your family, and you have to take care of your community. And I kind of do that to some degree as an oncologist currently, but I help people on what we call a micro level. And that's not really fair, because if you've ever known somebody that's had a cancer diagnosis, that changes their whole universe. And essentially, what I want to do is I want to take those skills that I've honed in as a physician, being analytical, compassionate, having a listening ear, and being able to do a lateral transition and do that to help people at a macro level. And that's the whole purpose of why I'm running.
We're out of time on that, I am so sorry, but hopefully you can maybe work it into some of your questions. So we are going to pick your question order now, so everyone can see. So you are going in the order two, five, four, one, three. So let us get started, we have seven minutes for the question portion, everyone. So question two, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of council, how would you address it?
Okay, so one of the most important issues that's really facing Arlington is economic development. I mean, we have to, we have to look at that, we're one of the fastest-growing cities, and so we have to be very cognizant about just economic growth, development, and then sustainability. One of those ways that we want to look at is just making sure that our population is better educated and a skilled workforce, and providing those ways of getting to that. I know that Arlington has really set up programs with kind of the Education Coalition of trying to help people get to that secondary type of education. Another thing is just improving our technology. At the end of the day, improving the ways that we currently utilize our resources in order to be more efficient, proficient, and sustainable. So trying to get upgraded and make sure that we're on the cutting edge always. And at the, at the last point, we really want to make sure that our institutions have kind of more of a streamlined process within our bureaucracy of kind of how we develop of development and then how to, and permits in order to minimize and improve productivity.
Thank you for that answer. Okay, our next question is number five. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality of opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Okay, so one of the things that we really need to look at is making sure that we're just cognizant of equality, diversity, and inclusion. I mean, that is of all of our citizens, that is very key. I mean, right now, currently Arlington has the Diversity Council, and that is going to be important, that we're listening to them as they're going to be keeping a check on the pulse of Arlington. In order to attract small and big businesses to Arlington, we need to be able to have employees feel comfortable in our city. By being a pioneer in DEI, we can be that beacon of progressive growth and development.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are moving to question number four now. What do you see as the most important priority for the newly-formed Economic Development Corporation?
So this kind of leads back a little bit to what I've said earlier, but one of the things that we really need to look at is the Economic Development, the EDC. That just sounds a lot, it's a lot faster to say, easier to say, just saying EDC needs to just have a strong awareness of the impact in recruiting businesses, but also at the same time, keeping those professionals in our city. So it's not just one thing to bring a business here, we want to make sure that those those businesses are attracting their professionals to live in our city, not necessarily be commuting in. And that kind of went into parts of, you know, being a pioneer in DEI, so that that way the workforce feels comfortable, but at the same token utilizing the resource of GTA just right down the street. And that's going to be really, really cognizant, so really going back to those first things that I talked about as far as making sure that our population force is educated and skilled, we're keeping up with technology, so we're keeping up with that 21st century, utilizing that, and then just making sure that our institutions have just a streamlined process to be able to become more productive.
Thank you for that answer. We are now moving to question number one, which is, what prior civic or community activities prepared you to serve on city council?
Okay, so the first thing that I'll say is, just being a, as being a businessman, look, I'm an oncologist by trade, so I'll let you guys kind of know that, that that's the first thing that I kind of came to. However, it was a big learning curve, having to come in and be part of, become part of a practice. Very quickly, I showed that I could do that, I could keep up with that task. Within our practice, I have been treasurer for the past two years of our, of our practice. We have over twenty-plus practices over the DFW area. I'm also on part of making sure that we are allocating the proper resources within our group, so that we have the funds that are going to that. Professionally, I'm on the Executive Board for Baylor All Saints in Fort Worth in Quality Assurance. And this way that we're optimizing and meeting and exceeding those quality metrics for the hospital. As a citizen, I grew up in Arlington. As a child, we were always engaged in various volunteer organizations. And then of recent, I volunteered in East Arlington Renewal with various community cleanup processes. Most importantly, though, I am a husband and a dad, right? So with, with my wife, she's a pharmacist, she's very involved, I'm always supporting her in her endeavors, but as a dad, I've been involved in Butler Dads Club. I'm also on the Butler Elementary School Site-Based Decision-Making Committee that helps allocate funds to, or allocate and decide on how we're going to be spending funds for Butler School.
Thank you so much for that answer, and now we are moving to your last question, which is number three. What is, what is the importance of your district's continued economic development?
Well, so as an at-large district, it's not like I'm just necessarily looking at one part of Arlington. So I think probably the biggest thing to look is, looking at the overall economic development is going to be key to the future of our city. We have to be cognizant of bringing new dollars into the town, not just kind of keeping the, what we're using with the citizens that we have. We have nineteen million visitors per year roughly, and we have to be innovative, we have to be innovative in the ways that we entice them to stay here, stay longer, and spend their monies in our city. We have to be aware that supporting of our big businesses and small businesses is going to be crucial into maintaining that goal, so that that we're actually being, bringing in new revenue going forward.
Well, thank you so much for being here today, we truly appreciate it, and we know you were the first one. So again, everyone, this is Albert Para, and he is running for city council district seat number six, and we truly appreciate you being here, I hope you have a lovely day.
Thank you so much.
Okay, everybody, we are going to move to our next candidate for city council district six, and this is Joshua Taylor. So Joshua, let me find you and get you promoted. And I am not seeing Joshua on the list, so as part of the rules, if you are not here, we, we skip you. So Joshua, if you are under a different name, please put in the chat and let me know, I'm going to give you a few seconds. Not seeing anything come in. Okay, then we will move to our next candidate, which is Long Fam. So Long Fam, I'm going to promote you up to a panelist and welcome you to our city council forum. Good morning, Long Fam, I hope you are enjoying this Wednesday morning.
Well, good morning, Ms. Mayor, so I go ahead and get started in my introduction.
Yes, sir, two minutes.
All right. Good morning, my name is Long Fam, and I'm running for Arlington City Council District Six. I want to thank you for taking the time to speak with me today. I have the honor of being endorsed by the Fire and Police, Mayor Jim Ross, and former mayor Jeff Williams and Richard Green. And I love the city of Arlington, I have spent my spare time helping the community, working at Mission Arlington, and assisting disabled veterans. The job of city council is a big responsibility, and working with constituents to make the educated decision. City council provides core services such as safety, sewer, trash, and water. My path experiences have given me the tools needed to succeed in city government. My military experience as retired Colonel makes me uniquely qualified to deliver leadership, but to work as a team with all the council members. My claim supervisor experience helped me deliver the highest level of customer service. My servant hearts helped me bring people together and get the job accomplished. My platform is very simple, work to keep our police and fire well-funded, to keep our neighborhoods safe, to keep our street in good repair, and work to lower our property tax. And briefly by myself, I came here forty-six years ago, a refugee from Vietnam, with mom and their seven kids, and a close in our back with fifteen dollars. Hard work, faith, family value, and education, I lived the American dream. So now I'm ready to serve the people of Arlington, and and now I'm willing to give up my job if I get elected and serve full-time, so I can continue to assist the citizen and get things done for, for the system of Arlington, Texas. Thank you.
Man, you did that right on time, four seconds left. So thank you so much for that opening statement, I'm now going to draw the order your questions will be given in, which is four, two, five, three, one. So our first question for you, I'm going to reset this timer for seven minutes, is number four, what do you see as the most important priority for the newly-formed Economic Development Corporation?
Well, small business is very vital to our city economy. I want to make, making sure that all small businesses stay in Arlington, because they are the heart and soul of the country. And Arlington is a very diverse city. We must also support women and minority small businesses as well. So, and also, in order to bring in the big businesses, the two things they're looking at is, number one is safety, okay, safety important. If, if our neighborhood are not safe, we don't have a good police and fire, no company want to come. And number two, education. I know the current mayor have the Educated Coalition, work with public school, private school, charter school, and homeschool to, to help the education. However, as city council, we don't have no say-so in education, because we have the school board doing that. But the education, the Educated Coalition that Mayor Ross created, that, that'd be the great step to, to help promote the education, because the two things that come to come is safety and, and education. And one example, I tell people this before, Toyota Corporation moved from Torin to California to North Texas, they got two choices, Plano and Dallas. So the choice for the office, they picked Plano, because Plano's got a better safety issue, and then the school is a lot better. So that's the reason why they came, so that, that's the two biggest thing to bring in any big corporation.
Thank you so much for that answer. We're going to move to number two, which is, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And how, as a member of city council, will you address it?
Well, the three letters, we're going to say jobs, jobs, and jobs, that's important, we had to bring that in. However, like I stated earlier, we have to have, we have to have a safe neighborhood, we have, we have good police force, good fire department, so, and then good school system, so then cooperation would, would come. Now, the most important thing right now is, we need to hire more police. We're the only city in North Texas, we require a four-year degree to get in. Now, as a veterans, I have an idea, I've talked to some fellow police officer. We have, I'm a former veterans, I would like, if, if you are veterans, you got a DD Form 214, a discharge paper with honorable discharge on there, you meet all requirements, we would weigh your four-year degree, and then you can come in, and then we can get you started. If you, you want to move up, then we could have tuition reimbursement, you can finish school daytime, nighttime, then you can have a career at, at the police department. And right now, our current class, we, we supposed to fill about forty-five per year, per academy class. This year we won't have twenty-five, with attrition, we might not finish twenty-five. And with the attrition rate of 3.5 per month, we're going to have, we're going to be short a lot of police officers. So that's, that's the things that are very important right now, to make sure we're safe, to get the, get the police, make sure they compensate it, make sure they get, and also, we make sure we take care of the fire department also, because these, the two groups in the city of Arlington is police and fire, they are risking their lives every day to work for, for the, for the system of Arlington. So we got to take care of them, and so that, that's the most important issue that facing Arlington at this time.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to question five. What should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality of opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Well, the Arlington, we have the unit council, the unit council along with newly-formed boards that, you know, that Mayor Ross created, would help to ensure, that's all people have a voice and a seat at a table. We are the seventh-most diverse city, so we need to make sure we take the time to meet everyone needs, and that's, that's very important, and that's, that's all I have for number five.
Okay, thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to question number three, which is, this is similar to the economic development question answer that you gave, but I'm going to give it to you anyway, which is, what is the importance to your district, which is an at-large district, of continued economic development, what's the importance?
Well, getting companies with high-paying job to invest in Arlington. Right now, we, we make it too hard to do business in Arlington. The process need to be streamlined, and we need to be more attractive to business owner, and we need to take care of our first responder to guarantee our neighborhood are safe. And like I mentioned earlier, that's important, neighborhood safe, we got a good school system. Big corporation would love to come here, do business. So if we want companies and people want to do business in Arlington, we got to be streamlined the process, make it more user-friendly, and then, you know, we also need to promote a small business, especially for the, I mentioned earlier, for the women and minority, because that's so critical, that the heart and soul of this country, the, the small business in America.
Okey-dokey, thank you so much for that answer, and your last question today is, what prior civic or community service activities prepared you to serve on city council?
My, my military experience as a leader, work at Mission Arlington, give back to the homeless and the less fortunate, work at the footbang, assist veterans to get the VA benefits. Over thirty-one years' leadership experience, twenty-five years in customer service business, makes me uniquely qualified to serve on city council.
Well, thank you so much for joining us today, Long Fam. Again, Long Fam is running for city council district six, and we appreciate you being here to join us as part of the Greater Arlington Chamber's Candidate Forum. I hope you have a great day.
Good, thank you.
Okay, everyone, we are going to move to our next panelist, I'm sorry, our next candidate. Our next candidate today is also for District Six, we have one more, and it is Chris, Chris Dobson. So Chris, I am going to promote you up to panelist.
Okay, there we go, I hope you can see me now and hear me.
We can, good morning, Chris, I hope today is going well for you. I'm going to start the timer for you to begin your two-minute introduction.
Okay, so my name is Chris Dobson, I'm sure you all have seen me over the last decade or so. I know how involved you are with local government. I'm the, the person that complained to the Texas Ethics Commission about Jeff Williams fundraising and got them to acknowledge credible evidence that a crime occurred. I'm also the one that reported Andy Peel for a donation from Moji Hadad. I got Rebecca Boxhall to return a donation to Sam Maruk, and I got Victoria Farah Myers to return a donation to Moji Hadad. I find that we are really lacking accountability in our city as far as what I consider a widespread influence peddling operation goes. I think our economic development at this point essentially operates as a racket. The most famous racket, of course, is the security racket. It should be horrible if something happened to these windows, you just got to pay us, and we'll make sure these windows are fine, except we're doing it with economic development. I look at our Economic Development Corporation as being very problematic, given the officers that sit upon it, and they're already the, the first project they've already done with Bell Helicopter. I'll get back to that when we get to the Economic Development Corporation. But I'd like to say that, you know, I grew up here in Arlington, I care about this city a lot, and I'd like to see the corruption in this town, and thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for your introduction. Now I'm going to draw the order of your questions, and you are going to get three, two, four, five, one. So with that said, let me set a new timer for seven minutes, and let's get started. So question number three, what is the importance to your district, so of all of Arlington, of continued economic development?
You know, I sometimes hear that there are job creators in our society, but the truth is that jobs are created when the people have the disposable money to spend on goods and services. And so I'd like to ask, what businesses are a part of the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce to pay their employees more? That's going to be the greatest form of economic development for our, our city. We are battling issues of affordability and housing and childcare, and I think it's, it's important that our residents are paid commensurate with their value. The extraction of surplus value from workers, which is acknowledged when businesses say, we can't, we can't hire somebody because they don't make enough money for us at that rate, I think is an antiquated explanation, we need to pay our workers more. There we go.
Well, thank you for that answer, Chris. We are going to move to your next question, number two, which is, what is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
So we have a widespread perception in Arlington of a pay-to-play environment in which giving donations to council members equates to favorable results when people come before the council. I think that has led to the majority of the population, which you can look at from voting turnout as well as other civic engagement measure, measurements, that most people have stopped believing that they have any, any ability to influence the council outside of large cash donations. So, you know, we have to address that issue, and we need councilmen who are unwilling to take money from business interests.
Okay, Chris, thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to your next question, which is number four. What do you see as the most important priority for the newly-formed Economic Development Corporation?
So I think the first thing the newly-formed Economic Development Corporation needs to do is actually read the rules of Type B Economic Development Corporation. As it turns out, there is a sixty-day window between the first public notice of any program and the day that funds can be divert, can be allocated. And that did not occur with the Bell Helicopter program. As it turns out, there was no public notice before what was the first meeting in June, and the city council passed it the next week, meaning that that program does not follow the rules. So it would be wonderful if the people that serve on that board and the officer positions could go ahead and read the rules. So it doesn't look like a self-serving action. I noticed that Bell Helicopter is a member of the Presidential Leadership Committee for the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce, meaning that they give somewhere between twelve and a hundred thousand dollars per year. And yeah, we need to make sure that when we operate a governmental entity like an Economic Development Corporation, that there's not any self-serving, and there's no conflict of interest, because the standard for public service is operating above the appearance of impropriety, which I don't think we're doing on the Economic Development Corporation right now.
Thank you so much for that answer, Chris, and we are going to move to number five, which is, what should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality of opportunity for all citizens in our community?
So I think it goes beyond just citizens, but all residents. Whether you have paperwork or not, I think we need to listen to the voice of all people, but most especially, people at the But most especially people at the bottom of the socio economic ladder, because they are the ones that have real needs in our society. Whereas I look at a lot of the things that our council does, helping people out, building high value apartment complexes or helping beard companies that operate inside tax incremental refinancing zones. You know, these to me are essentially wastes of money that do nothing but discourage people in Arlington from taking or of being of participating in our system. So it would be it would be important and a great step forward if the city of Arlington actually listened to everybody, not just the citizens. Because we are a diverse community, but all of our residents and really operated in the areas where they are in need, not necessarily where some of people would want.
Thank you so much for that answer, Chris. We are moving to your last question, which is number one. What prior civic or community service activities prepare you to serve on city council?
You know, I I went to UTA for my graduate degree in public administration. It was in financial management and community and economic development. And I was offered one internship that was just offered to me. It was with Deloitte and Touche. And it paid forty five dollars an hour. The the job description was maximizing client returns on municipal investments. And so I understand that it is a pretty big business, getting money out of cities so that your profit margins go up. I'm completely opposed to that. I think that our money could be far better spent in other ways, actually dealing with the needs as I've discussed before. And so I kind of see this game for what it is. And between the campaign to get the tax incremental, the the EDC and to keep the Rangers. I've seen so many lies spread about what our money will be used for, about what the benefits will be. That, you know, I'm just tired of the influence peddling and corruption that goes on in this city. So you know, if if it was up to me, I would tear your organization down brick by brick and possibly start something new. But I don't suggest y'all donate to me because it would be going against y'all's interests entirely.
Well, thank you so much for your answer on that question, Chris. We appreciate you being here today. And Chris is again, Chris Dobson, he is the last candidate we have today for city council district six. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much. I really appreciated it.
Okay, everyone, I am sending Chris back down to the attendee pool and we are going to shift to city council district seven, which is also an at large district. I apologize for not mentioning that for city council district six previously. So we have two candidates today for a city council district seven. So we are going to get started with our first candidate Cindy Golden. So Cindy, I'm going to promote you up to a panelist. Go ahead and turn your mic and camera on for me, please.
I have it. There we are.
Perfect. So I'm going to set a timer for two minutes and then you can get started with your opening statement. Thank you so much for being here.
Well, thank you so much for having me. It's a wonderful opportunity. All the candidates I want to applaud for running. We were up late last night with another forum, so it's a marathon, not a sprint, and I'm very glad to be here. My professional occupation is I'm an advanced practice nurse. I've been delivering anesthesia for over thirty nine years in the metroplex, mostly at nonprofit hospitals. But I was called into leadership early in my life and it really is a calling. You have to want to do it because it is not easy, serving on the student council even as early in high school. But I've been the president of the Texas Association of Narcotists. In the city, I have most proudly worked as the chair of the Subcommittee on Health and Wellness for the Ad hoc Unity Council. I have served on the Community Relations Commission and I currently serve, which gives me a particular perspective of our city at large, not just in the area that I live. I think everyone should participate in community service. I have a servant heart. I have good critical thinking skills from giving anesthesia in the operating room. And I think those are all talents and opportunities that I've enjoyed that will make me a particularly good candidate for the city council of Arlington.
Well, thank you so much for that opening statement, Cindy. We are going to get started with your questions. So I'm going to shake this up and your question order is five, three, one, four, two. So we are going to get started. Let me set my timer for seven minutes. And your first question is, what should city council be doing to promote and ensure equality of opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Well, actually, Arlington is a leader in the nation. At the direction of the city council, the the Ad hoc Unity Council was formed. It was twenty nine members. And we investigated five pillars, education, housing, policing, criminal justice and health and wellness. So we looked at the city through the lens of racial disparity, but it also revealed several several things in the city that we needed to work on that we hadn't addressed. So I think our city is doing a really good job. If you look at the city budget, each department has a graph that shows how they're engaging for MWBE businesses. And quite frankly, we're not doing a very good job of that, but we are seeking to do that. According to the new MWBE plan, our goal is thirty percent of contracts. So that's really good. We've got to work on it on both ends, though. We have to also, part of the problem is the pool of candidates for MWBE contracts. So we have to work on it in that respect. Possibly by partnering with UTA, even maybe high schools with Future Business Leaders of America to provide internships and opportunities for them to grow and to promote businesses in groups that may not have had the opportunity in the past.
Well, thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to question three, which is what is the importance to your district? So in this case, the whole city of Arlington. What is the importance of continued economic development?
Economic growth is good for our city. It's multifaceted and I will tell you, we can speak to the elephant in the room, but commerce and citizens have not always gotten along. In some respects, they've been opposed to each other. And I don't think this is necessary. Citizens and commerce should together because we're due. The economic growth produces jobs for citizens. It decreases our X rate. So it's important in that aspect. We have to provide an educated workforce for economic development. One thing that I see as an issue are small businesses, speaking of small businesses, the mom and pop type organizations. Those are the businesses that in general the public refers to as small business. We have to work at supporting them because in the Economic Development Corporation plan, those types of businesses are not really included. The plan includes businesses that provide primary jobs. So you're mostly looking at mid sized businesses and I would like we should look at those that are here.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are now going to move to question number one, which is what prior civic and community service activities prepare you to serve on city council?
Well, I've lived in Arlington for thirty seven years and I volunteered in many capacities. One, I'm proud to say I volunteered at Martin High School for ten years, which was wonderful. But if I'm looking at the most recent contribution, it has to do with the Ad hoc Unity Council, the Unity Council of Arlington and the Community Relations Commission. Arlington changing and we cannot expect a different result if we're doing the same thing that we've done all along. So we need fresh ears and eyes and a different perspective to take Arlington into the future. And that's the date that I am. I'm looking at things towards the future. We have a wonderful past, particularly with business, and we can thank Mayor Vandergriff mostly for that. But we have to address the future and what it's going to be for our children and grandchildren. So working in the capacity where this where I have worked all of a sudden, I feel like that gives me a different perspective of a lot of issues facing Arlington.
Thank you for that answer. We are now going to move to question number four, which is what do you see as the most important priority for the newly formed Economic Development Corporation?
I think referring to what I was talking about, citizens and commerce being at odds with each other. I think it's very important that regardless of what the EDC does, that there's transparency involved and communication. We, since it mostly looks at larger businesses or businesses that provide primary jobs. We need to address the smaller businesses, the ones I refer to as the mom and pop businesses. They provide vital services and employment for our citizens. So how can we support them by education, making them informed about opportunities with either grants or state help? Or how can we do that? Couldn't we even just have a small business day? Let's say every third Saturday is Small Business Day. Let's support a small business in Arlington. We're going to do great with our big businesses. Arlington, the city of Arlington is expert in that. Look what a wonderful job we've done with the Medal of Honor Museum and and our big businesses. But I would like to see us prioritize our small businesses, mom and pop type businesses that provide those services that everyone in the city uses.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to your last question, which is number two. What is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of city council, how would you address it?
There are a lot of important issues. I think if you ask citizens currently today, they would tell you crime. They are most worried about crime right now. Well, crime is up everywhere. We have to acknowledge that. And again, we have to realize that we are no longer the sleepy suburb. We're an urban city of almost four hundred thousand people. So the way to do that is to support our police officers, certainly. Citizens also need to participate and decrease the opportunity for crime. They need to keep their doors locked. They need to have good outside lighting. They need to, if they see something, they need to report it.
Crime, that is your seven minutes. I am so sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you so much for joining us today. We truly appreciate it. Again, everyone, this is Cindy Golden and she is running for city council district seven. Thank you for joining us this morning. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, we are on to our final candidate for the morning and it is Bowie Hogg for district seven as well. So Bowie, I'm going to get you promoted to panelist. Go ahead and turn your mic and video on for me. Good morning, sir. Thank you so much for doing this today.
Good morning. Let's do a check real quick to make sure it's working.
You are, you are perfect. Feed is great. So I'm going to set this timer for two minutes and please give us your opening statement.
Hey, good morning. Thank you to the Arlington Chamber and thanks for doing this, especially virtually today. I'm on a business trip. So out of town and calling from outside when it's a little chilly out here. So I appreciate it. My name is Bowie Hogg. And I am running for district seven at large, represent the entire city. I'm proud to put my name in this. I'm proud to serve as as other candidates. It's hard to run. Running for office is difficult, especially in this day and age. And so I commend all the other candidates for running. I am born and raised in Arlington. I have spent my entire life here except for a few years in college at Texas A&amp;M and then I'm in New York for just a little bit, but then I came back and I chose Arlington. You know, I was born, I I went to Duff Bailey Arlington High, then I got a business degree at Texas A&amp;M University. You know, as Mr. Parr said, he majored in genetics. I majored in business, so I probably didn't have to study as hard as he did during that time. But it's been a great thing. I love Arlington and I've served Arlington well and I'm running for for city council to help bridge the gap. I've served the last thirteen years as dedicated to the city to bridge the gap from, I've served the last thirteen years as a school board member to now run and serve the city council and grow Arlington. You know, my wife is born and raised here. She went to Pantigo and then UTA. And I have two daughters. We have a five year old and seven year old. We want to make sure they love this city as much as we have. I've served the city across the board. I've been, I'm proud to be endorsed by the Police and Fire Associations. I'm proud to be endorsed by Mayor Ross, Mayor Williams, Mayor Green, current council members who serves in the city, Victoria Farrar Myers, Andrew Peel, Helen Moyes, Rebecca Boxall, Impact of Arlington, Arlington Board of Realtors, Young Men for Arlington. It's it's a great honor to serve and represent the entire city. And I'm proud to put my name in the hat and help continue to grow this city and continue this city for a city that I love so much in Arlington.
Well, thank you so much for that opening statement. Cut it down to three seconds. That was awesome.
Wow, I'm sitting outside, so the timing is hard. I don't see any timer, so I appreciate that.
So we are going to pick your question order and it is three, four, one, two, five. So your first question is number three, what is the importance to your districts? In this case, the whole city. What is the importance of continued economic development?
On continued economic development? Yeah, listen, the continued economic development is critical for Arlington of what we're doing and where we're going. So finding the continued economic development and as we represent the entire city, what are we doing to grow? What are we doing to find the ways to to figure out how do we grow businesses, right? We've got the new EDC. We're going through tracking, we're going through trending of where do we go and create job creation? And job creation is a mix, right? It's large businesses, it's small businesses, it's finding ways to build that. We also have to let the market speak for itself. You know, sometimes council members come in and try and control and drive too much, but the market's telling you what is happening and what needs to occur. And as a governing, you have to understand how to govern. You have to create good rules. You have to keep good fundamentals. And redevelopment is the number one issue that you have to have for economic development. We are at a stage, we are ninety nine square miles in Arlington and we have to be focused on the redevelopment to really be able to help the economic development. But if you don't have safety, none of this redevelopment happens. It doesn't happen. You have to have it, you know, as former mayor says, we have to keep the cash registers flowing. And that is the key right there. But if we don't have a safe city, nothing else matters.
Thank you so much for your answer. We are going to move now to question number four, which is what do you see as the most important priority for the newly formed Economic Development Corporation?
Yeah, plain and simple, you know, it's an economic development corporation, right? Anyone who's in this world knows, we've got to have an ROI, right? What the citizens put their names up there and they voted and said, yes, this is important. This is going to help Arlington. And this is the competitive market that we're in right now, what we have to do. We now have a huge advantage. So are we going to show an ROI? Are we going to show a benefit that back to the taxpayers of why this is so important? They've done the right steps. They've created a strategic plan. They brought in an executive director. We're getting to that stage of where it's going to go. But what has to be formed with that, you know, it has to be job development and I mentioned it before, but large corporations, small business, we have to have that focus of how do we build those and create that. But then it's about redevelopment. Are we are we offering those pieces? Because redevelopment adds a lot of extra cost and it's hard. It's challenging. And you'll get folks that say, I'm going to go where it's path of least resistance and make it a little easier. So if we're creating that, we're showing the ROI and showing that and finding what the market needs to be able to help them on the redevelopment, that's the goal of the priority of the EDC.
Thank you so much, Bowie, for that answer. We are going to move to your next question, which is number one. What prior civic and community service activities prepared you to serve on council?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I could spend the entire seven minutes on this. I'm going to try and be quick. I love this city. I've served this city. You know, I served on the in high school. I was class president and then I served on the citizens' high citizens' police academy for high school students. So I started then. But I've served numerous ways. You name it, I've probably served on it. I served on the downtown Arlington Management Board. I served, I had a couple of years on the chamber board. I was on the United Way of Tarrant County Board. I chaired the United Way of Arlington. I was on the Leadership Arlington Board, Theater Arlington Board, Arlington Life Shelter Advisory Board. But then the most important, these last thirteen But then the most important, these last 13 years and all those have been mixed in, but also I've served as a school board member. I've served former board president for 13 years on the school board. When I ran for the school board, it was truly on a, hey, the boards become too reactive. How do we become proactive? And so understanding that governing is hard work. Governing is hard work. Constituent services is hard work, especially in this day and age. And understanding how to connect the dots, how do we bridge the gap from the city and the schools to be able to get there? And I think that's what I bring. I come in immediately understanding how to govern, how to work with city staff, how to work with constituents and really be able to help the council move to the next level is my goal.
Thank you so much for that answer, Bowie. We are going to move to your next question, which is number two. What is the most important issue facing Arlington? And as a member of City Council, how would you address it?
Yeah, the most important issue, it's it's kind of a twofold, but I'll go with one. And we mentioned earlier, safety is the most important issue, right? Crime rates, aggravated assault and rapes are up. Homicides are actually down a little bit, but aggravated assaults and crimes are up. And so what are we doing? You know, some of those things and what they're facing on that. First off, you know, it being endorsed by police and fires a critical factor because if you don't have a safe city, nothing else matters. You know, we only filled 27 of 40 slots for the police academy and we're losing on average about four officers a year. The city of Plano, for example, has you reach max out pay at 90, at 10 years. We're in Arlington 20 years. We've got to find that. We've got to increase our recruitment and our retention from that perspective. But we've also got to put some of the initiatives that the police have put in place, you know, social workers going out, required follow up calls to be able to go. That helps reduce some of those unfortunately rapes with the pandemic. It has become a major issue that has to be addressed. And then we also have to look, you know, how are policing is working and what's going on? There it's a hard job. It's a very difficult job and we have to put that in that safety leads to redevelopment. And so you have to have the safety to be able to get to that. And with that redevelopment, you need to do a UDC resign concurrent permitting. These are things that need to be put in the process that the council needs to tackle the next couple of years.
Thank you so much for that answer. We are going to move to your final question, which is what should City Council be doing to promote and ensure equality of opportunity for all citizens in our community?
Yeah, listen, diversity and equality is a good thing in a city. There's a million studies out there that show this is good for a city. We're a very diverse city. It's, we embrace it. We do really well with it. It's a critical factor. What are some of the things we have to do? We have to be able to provide things like a hub incubator. How are we helping grow businesses? You know, we want to grow business in Arlington. We have amazing citizens here in Arlington. How are we helping them grow and provide that extra hub incubator? Which which I know we're targeted and to make sure we're growing businesses that we need in Arlington. Let's not just grow a random business. Let's grow businesses we need and help them understand that. And then the second step, you got to say, how do we, how do you navigate City Hall? City Hall is a big intimidating place. It can be difficult. If you've never gone in and fully understood what happens, how do you grow that business? And the chamber does a great job of helping that. But how do we navigate that and grow it even more in there? And then the last piece for that equity, we've got to provide basic services, right? We've got to provide the services our city that we provide and that's healthcare, services, housing, basic things that were provided. I heard your buzzer, so I think I got knocked on my seven, seven minute without being yelled at. I'll stop on my own with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, Bowie. Again, everyone, this is Bowie Hogg and he is running for City Council District Seven. We truly appreciate your time this morning and I hope you have a lovely day.
Thank you so much.
Okay, everybody, that is our candidate forum. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. We are going to upload this video to YouTube later today and we'll make sure to send a link out to all the attendees. So if you heard from a candidate that really resonated with you or you'd like to share this with other citizens of our community to ensure that they are informed, we would really appreciate your help on that. And thank you again for supporting the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce and programming like this, our candidate forums. I hope all of you have a lovely day.